Thank you for settling down so quickly. We've got a lot of work to do tonight, so... Commissioner Cladwell? We'll wait just a second on Commissioner Cladwell. I think he had to run to the restroom right in the last minute. Okay. Yes, we are waiting on you. And Mr. Chapman said he wouldn't wait if it was him. Okay, we'll start with Pastor Greg Cantalano from Vision Church at Christian International. We'll give our invocation and please stand, remain standing for the pledge. Is he here? Jason, would you go ahead and do that for us, please?
Lord, thank you for your goodness and your mercy and your kindness. We thank you for how good you are to us, Lord. We thank you for blessing America. Thank you for blessing Walton County. Thank you for all the goodness that you're doing. We ask you to give guidance and direction to our commissioners and every issue that comes up tonight, Lord, that it will be in your perfect will whatever they decide. We'll be careful to give you all the glory and all the praise. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to recognize the elected officials here. My good friend from many years, Mr. Boots McCormick, City Council of Freeport. If I'm overlooking any other elected officials, please raise your hand. Boots, we appreciate you coming out, buddy. Good to see you again. We would call the meeting to order. Any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add the Headland Street neighborhood access to the agenda and also the Walton Dunes as now described, regional beach access to the agenda for further discussion for the board and action.
All right, any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Sidney, would it be appropriate for us to go ahead and handle those right now?
You guys can decide to do that.
Is there a motion to do that?
Make a motion. I'm not saying no.
You did the vote on your...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Let's vote on the agenda additions first. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. We will start with the, if we have a motion to go ahead and start those now?
Make a motion to speak about Headland and Walton Dunes beach access.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second discussion. I've got a question about order here. Do we do go ahead with the public comments on any agenda item at this time or go ahead and take whatever action we're going to take on Headland and Walton Dunes?
Well, so we've already had public comment on Headland and Walton Dunes, so I mean it would be appropriate if you wanted to go ahead and handle Headland and Walton Dunes now.
Okay. Well, that was her motion and my second.
Okay.
Do we need to do the rest of, or do we have any other additions and deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Do we do public comment?
No.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on four to go ahead and have a discussion and a vote on Headland and Walton Dunes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. We'll need a motion on one of the two to start. Do we have that motion?
Let's do Headland first. So I make a motion that we give TDC the authority to open the Headland and to bring us back a plan.
Design.
The design and bring that back to us so we can approve the design. I make a motion, we open it and get a design.
So, second.
Second. Any discussion? Sid, do we take any discussion from the audience since we've already had the...
Yeah, so we've already had public comment.
Okay, we've already had public comment on that. Any more discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right.
For staff, just for clarity, Commissioner, to understand, your motion was to open the access once they brought you back a design for this board's approval. So the question of whether to open or not has been settled?
Yes.
It is just a matter of the design that they bring to you for your approval.
Brian or whoever needs to bring us back a design to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on Walton Dunes?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Heard a lot this morning or this afternoon.
Turning that, one thing that I have proffered in 2016 and even as of today, we've got to have a safe way for people to get down to the beach, 38 holding down. I know we've got two hairpin curves that are in there that need to be addressed. We need to extend and widen our sidewalks, multi paths, whatever you want to call them, all the way from 38 down to the beach. So my motion is to require Public Works to move forward with a design. But I think in talking with Chance, we already got Atkins or somebody that's doing some preliminary work. Is that right, Chance? They're doing preliminary work. They're not quite to the 30 percent submission yet, but would ask that they try to expedite that since we've been talking about this for many years on that part of it and also have the design firm with TDC that's on this and I think that's Preble Ridge from Dewberry now. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, sir.
To move forward with the design minimizes the impact to any of the dunes that's out there. And as I understand it, the bathroom facility, whether it's on the west side or the east side, is going to have to be elevated by pylons anyway to get above the FEMA requirement and come back with something that is not overly impacting the neighborhood and roadway in there, but providing some type of access there for our elderly, our handicapped and our disabled veterans, that they can have access, easier access to the beach area to enjoy that. So I would like, as part of the motion, to make sure that the design firm, which happens to be Dewberry, to come back no later than 60 days. Cliff, I'm looking at you. Can you accommodate that? 60 days back with a preliminary desire for us to review, massage or whatever, so we can then move forward with getting this because it's been going on way too long. We need to bring it in for a landing and make one decision, one way or the other. But right now, that's my motion.
Second for discussion. Commissioner, would you make part of that motion to instruct them to construct or to design the turnaround so that we, I think that would do a lot to improve safety out there.
Well, that was part of it. I overlooked that part of it, but where the road makes the 90 degree here at the opening, design a turnaround there, a cul-de-sac if you will, not a, we ain't got enough right of way to put around about, so...
So your design, your motion is to ask the TDC to go ahead and get Dewberry to do a design of the regional beach, but with the turnaround and also we need to encompass Atkins for safety issues.
Right, and that Atkins is doing the roadway and the sidewalk analysis and design up through there. I'm going to make an assumption, Cliff, since I'm looking at you, that the fact that the two of you can also mesh together to try and coordinate the design into what they may have. You're shaking your head yes. Is that correct?
And so before this comes to us for final, the owners of On Beach Front Trail will be able to have their input because I know that was a very big concern when we spoke.
Will there be a public hearing after?
Not unless, not unless it's directed in this motion.
All right, so I'm just assuming that the design will be at our discretion based on safety, all the considerations with Atkins.
I think...
There's just so much...
What I heard today is there's a lot of people, yeah, a lot of people, they gave their comments. Jay was sitting, I mean, not Jay, but Brian was sitting there and other staff members were sitting there, so I'm sure they got an idea of what they were wanting from the community down there. It is still county-owned property and I think as county-owned, we do have the right to do what we can, but we want to make sure it's, whatever we do, is safe.
I think the turnaround is, I think the turnaround does a lot to fix a safety problem.
That sidewalks and...
Making the sidewalk go from where the bathrooms are located all the way to 38, that's another part. And we need handicap parking because like Commissioner said, we want to make it accessible to everyone and we want to limit the impact on the dunes. Everything that I think we need to do was included in the motion.
Well, the main thing is if there's any additional parking put down there, any of that, it would be for handicap and disabled veterans and those that need to get closer to it than somebody maybe want to park up there or even walk from the neighborhood.
I think as an aside or as part of this, maybe not part of the motion, but part of this is Ms. Oxon's list of stuff we need to, that's already been approved by the board, but we need to make sure that's in force.
Can I just, I apologize, can I just confirm, is this a neighborhood access or a regional access that we're voting on?
The motion was regional access.
Can I offer some suggestions? We did a project very similar to this design concept at our Miramar Beach Access, the new Regional Beach Access, where we included the people of the Amalfi Coast condominium in a workshop prior to conceptual design and then we also worked with them continually through the design. So I would recommend that we do that same process. And so part of this we also have to do is Dewberry, Preble Ridge's original task order included to come up with these conceptual designs. So they've completed that task order. So I think what we need to do is issue them a new task order, bring that back for approval along with a basic understanding or conceptual design of what we've talked about today and then that would be approved at the next meeting and then we march on with design development under that format that I just suggested.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to call the question to go ahead and address this regional beach access and then as far as what Brian said, I don't mind following up with a motion to have that workshop meeting with the community.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
All right, second motion is to direct TDC staff, Brian, to have a workshop once they come up with some preliminary design based upon what the criteria I mentioned today with the community down there.
Right, and that will also include a new task order to Dewberry and the associated cost for that, for approval. They've completed the work under their original task order to do conceptual design work for this project.
Well, we're still looking at conceptual design.
Okay.
But I think the new one takes the parking out.
Some of it. Okay, that's fine. I'll make it part of the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second. So the parking's mainly going to be those handicaps.
Well, that's what I was alluding to when I made that discussion is to have, if wherever it is, the parking that was made available would be for handicap and disabled vets to get there, have them the closest ones. Everybody else can either walk or ride a bike.
Or go to the other park.
As well as include a loading and loading zone.
The turn away on and the loading and...
That was in the original motion, yeah.
Can we ask Public Works to expedite that sidewalk from, you know, on outs? There's about a 50 feet between the end of the sidewalk and where the beach starts. We could go ahead and get that done and that would help.
Well, let's not muddy the...
Okay.
Motion, let's try and hit one thing at a time.
All righty.
Any other discussion? What's the board's wishes? I mean, I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Okay.
Motion was... When did we go from a neighborhood to a regional?
Ma'am, if you want to talk, come up here. Don't stand back there.
I'm confused in this process as, is it not been known as a neighborhood beach access? When... Oh, okay, Kay Carlton, Beachfront Trail? It's always been known as a neighborhood beach access and are we not due process as we're changing it from a neighborhood beach access to a regional beach access?
I'm sorry.
Are we not due process?
We had a public workshop that we advertised and took comment on, so I think that was part of our process.
But when did it change?
So that was the commission's vote was to direct the engineer to design a conceptual design that included preserving as much of the dune as possible, prioritizing handicap access with parking for handicap access, a turnaround and then for that design to come back within 60 days from our continuing service.
That was just now, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that was the motion of the board.
Okay, but he, I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson, you mentioned that it was a, it was a regional beach access. Prior to that, prior to today, it's always been known as a neighborhood. When did it change from a neighborhood to a regional?
So regional and neighborhood beach accesses, those are just terms that the TDC uses. A regional beach access has a restroom and parking facilities and that was part of the board's motion was to have a restroom and parking facilities, so that...
But we weren't given any notice that that was going to change until just like right now.
We just had a...
I mean, aren't you supposed to notice all the, the people who live in that area?
I think what you're hanging up, that's just a name and the amendment that we're going to have another public workshop, I believe that's the second motion, to let the neighborhood have more comment about how, the size and how things go, so there'll be additional...
I'm sorry, I just am not clear. I just was totally...
Whether you call it a regional or a, whatever you call it, what we're talking about is these certain amenities, the restroom, we already have parking out there. We've got a parking lot that's already built. So now we're just talking about adding a bathroom and Commissioner Chapman added a...
Handicap, disabled.
And then we added a cul-de-sac or a turnaround.
Right, okay. On the west end?
Yeah, on the west end of the, or on the west end, so...
So now, and you might have been asking about development order approvals?
Yes.
So, you know, this project, like any other project, would have to go through a development order process. That may or may not require public notice and notice to individuals in the surrounding neighborhood. That would just be determined by the planning department whether or not it met those thresholds.
But I thought part of the procedure was to let the public or neighborhood have some input on that.
Right, on the design.
Right.
So until we have a design, we can't go forward and get a development order.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we're going to have a workshop.
TDC.
How'd a clerk, you clear on the motions?
That was oval.
Leave it alone. Everything's been voted on, the motions that have been...
And thank you all for everything, but can we just be part of the process with the design for Brian? And I understand what you just said, but I mean even before the workshop, so that he comes forward to you guys with a design that's incorporated because we know where the safety problems are and so maybe just one representative from each area so you don't get inundated with too many people, but just have a few representatives work with Brian to say, here's where the hot spots are, where the danger sections are.
Yes, you can meet with Brian on those things.
Ma'am, that's what I was pushing, so that TDC is having a workshop for that exact reason.
Well, I mean, I'd just rather have the designs already have that in place before they're presented to you so that we've already worked with Brian and Preble Ridge or whoever.
You can have all the time you need with Brian. Brian's expected to be busy for a while. For all of you that would like to leave, we'll take just a minute or two to let y'all leave. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay, but I know a lot of you have been here since 2 o'clock, so... Do we have any public comment on any agenda items if you have to leave? It has to be an agenda item. Is there any items, more items that we need to remove from the consensus? Okay, approval of waste management, V A Ls?
Mr. Chairman, I have acknowledged in my conflict of interest for items number 32, 33, and 34 under the waste management part of the budget. I have filed the proper form with the clerk and will not vote.
All in favor of the approval?
We have a motion.
All right, do we have a, we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, was it 32?
Number 32. E A Ls. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we have a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a memorandum of understanding with Mason Waste Management regarding limited Sunday hours at the land building. This is, we do this every year. It's the increase in population during the summer, so this is not something we haven't done before. 33.
And just for the record, it is in the material, but Waste Management pays for the three hours of work on Sunday to accommodate the...
Motion to approve? Second. Any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Number 34, request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the second and last renewal of collection and purchase of recyclable, recyclable and salvageable materials, contract number 016-015 with Waste Management Inc. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just a quick comment on recyclable materials. As you may be aware, each of our franchise brief with Waste Management requires them to provide us with the most recent state of affairs in the recycling industry. We have received that. Bubba Key has written a brief in white paper on it and will be visiting with all of you in Mexico to just let you know that recycling market's still in progress. All right, can you...
Mr. Gallin, take over.
Number 35, we have some folks from Stone Clinical Laboratory, Mr. Blair Barbie, excuse me, there's a difference between Bossy Head in Louisiana. CFO is just going to give us a brief update on where they are and how things are going.
Yes, sir. You're welcome. Perfect. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for having me. Folks of Walton, happy, happy to be here. Progress has been steady and really moving forward, I have to admit. Putting together a clinical laboratory in 45 to 60 days is, in some regards, impossible, but with the help of the county, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Lord and Son and their professionalism and how hard they've worked, we've been able to get the laboratory up in place to this point. We have instrumentation in the laboratory and we're beginning validations. So the progress has been quite steady, so a big thank you to you guys and all the, all the help that you've provided and will continue to provide. We've moved forward with hiring, beginning to hire our staff. We're up to five FTEs at this point. We anticipate by midsummer being up to 15 or 20 FTEs and anticipate that number doubling come the fall. So we feel good about that. We've actually gotten to some, some pre-selling, some shadow testing and really feel good about the feedback that's coming from our national payers, our state payers, and the clients that we have here, whether it be hospitals, clinics, other labs, whatever it may be. That's, so that's been really positive in addition to the feedback that we're getting as we put draw stations along the panhandle. We have multiple that are, will be here in Walton County and throughout the panhandle, getting a lot of good feedback from the public there as well. So we really feel good. We're really appreciative of the help that you guys have been providing us. The construction's been going well, instruments are in, we're beginning to hire the folks and we look forward to a grand opening and ready to provide some more health benefits to the folks here. So thanks again for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, it's days like these that are exciting and, you know, making the holidays that we all put in worthwhile, but when you hear such good reports and folks already on payroll with more coming, that does make for an exciting day, so we appreciate all you doing. We're here from wherever you may be.
And just so everyone, just to remind everyone, these are jobs that are in Freeport and they're very high-paying jobs.
That's correct.
So we appreciate the new jobs in our community.
You know, I kind of want to be careful in saying this, but Triumph and the opportunities to try to prompt these folks...
to try and brought these folks to us. They didn't fit at that time into the Triumph criteria, but we were able to pull it off anyway. So let's attribute to you guys for the hard work and commitment that you've made to move the county forward, certainly utilizing all the resources that are available to us, but when those resources don't look at, don't work out like we like, let's look for some others. And I can tell you we're committed to doing that, so we appreciate those opportunities.
Shout out to Billy, too.
I was gonna say, we don't want him to talk, but we'll say, "Good job."
He'll pull out a Mr. Microphone.
Next.
It would cringe when you say that, Melanie, so...
Well, we do appreciate you and we appreciate the staff, the hard work they put in to help you come to Walton County, and thank you for being a part of our business community and being a part of our county. We appreciate it.
Our next item is from a request from Mayor Terry Holly from the city of Florala as a request to close Lake Jackson Boat Round for military exercise. They've done this at least last year and maybe for the last couple of years. It's really no more than going down and blocking off a ramp, and it's pretty obvious that things are going on in the lake, but we need board action in order to accommodate him and that is for May 29 of this year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Okay, we have a representative from Greatwood, Driftwood, Greater Driftwood HOA with some good news, a donation for the completion of some pickleball courts. Now let's introduce yourself and come from there.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Hobson from the Greater Driftwood Board of Directors with Debbie Michelle also with Board of Directors. I know normally when you guys see Driftwood on the agenda, you tend to curage a little bit, but tonight you can tell from the agenda item, it's a completely different reason we're here tonight. About 10 years ago, you built a park, we built a park in Driftwood, and it started out just a basic park with a few walking trails and a few little playground equipment. Over time, that has grown. We now have playground equipment with a covered canopy, basketball, tennis courts, bathroom facilities, handball, soccer, and backstop for baseball or softball. One of the items was a pickleball that was put in, and it was agreed after it was constructed that it didn't meet the requirements of anybody that's a serious pickleball player. So, Miss Michelle met with the county representatives and we came up with an agreement that, yeah, you need a new, we need a new pickleball court. They started working, work stopped, we found out that there was a shortage of money, so tonight we're here to give a check to Walton County for $25,000 to complete that pickleball court, and we only have one request, and that is that you do it sooner rather than later. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we get a picture with y'all?
Sure.
Don't get him to chew. Mr. Chair.
I don't think you want to be taking the check. We do need a motion, though, to accept the donation for the purpose stated by Mr. Hobson.
Slowed.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no.
Thank you very much. Next item, request to appoint Kevin Henderson to fill the economic development vacancy on the local Restore Committee. As you know, there are 11 members to that committee. Each member is attached to a different segment of the county, and the member representing economic development had stepped down, and we are requesting you appoint Mr. Kevin Henderson to fill that role.
Let's just...
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Next item is a request to appoint Mel Smagelski. I found out if you say them both together real fast, it works a lot better, who is the city manager of the city of Phoenix Springs to serve on the local Triumph Board replacing Mr. Kelly. So we would ask your approval for that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Thank you. Item number 40 is regarding the Walton County Strategic Plan and the update of that plan. You have a draft copy of it in your book. What we would recommend is you take that copy, review it over the next couple of weeks, provide to admin your additions, changes, or deletions. Let us compile those into one document that has everyone's thoughts and comments, and it may take us a couple of meetings to get there, depending on your feedback, but we would like it to be thorough, so we don't want to rush you through it. And then we'll compile all of your thoughts and comments into one document, present that back to you to make changes and approve a final draft or final document.
Sid, do we need a motion for that, or do we just need to direct staff?
We need a motion to accept it.
Yeah.
Okay, to accept it, but then direct staff to...
I'll make the motion.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, or any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we look forward to your thoughts and comments regarding it.
Yes.
And we'll get those compiled back to you. Item number 41 is regarding the agreement between the county and the city of Phoenix regarding harvesting field and reuse of that field. The current contract expires in June, maybe, fairly soon. But the way the agreement is currently written is, it's probably very one-sided, and if the board chooses to leave it that way, that's fine. But as opposed to letting it lapse, we wanted to ask your permission to negotiate with the city for perhaps a more favorable agreement to the county and then bring that agreement back for your consideration at a later date, but to extend the current contract for 90 days to give us opportunity to meet with them and try to flesh out some of the issues that are there.
So you want us to...
We just need a motion to...
And then give staff direction to negotiate, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and to extend the contract 90 days, okay?
I move we extend the contract 90 days and direct staff to negotiate a better one or a different one.
We have a second?
I'll second that. Our hope is we move forward, staff is looking at all these inter-local agreements that we have with not only Dufanyak but Portin others, because most of them are, like you said, Larry, one-sided, and it puts, we need to be more cognizant of what the county should be interested in.
I think we're in the process of renegotiating Paxton already.
Could be. Yeah, as they come due, we'll certainly follow the same process.
Okay. Any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Item number 42 is a request to award RFQ 019-017 for federal lobbying services and begin negotiations with a highest-ranked firm, which was the Color Nine Group. Motion to approve?
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience?
We're fortunate to have one of the candidates for this be someone from our community that knows our community very, very well, who's been very active in support of just different issues we've had, has led the charge for the coastal dune lakes for several years now, and while Debbie may not be the highest-ranked firm, and I don't know what all the criteria, you know, how you've evaluated the different criteria, or how the evaluation committee did it, I think when you are fortunate enough to have someone in the community that is, you know, is involved and has participated this much, that there should be some real weight given to that, even if it's not necessarily, you know, if they don't necessarily have as much weight in some area that may not be as significant. So I know that it says here you're gonna go with Color Nine Group, or that you're looking at that, but I'd encourage you to reevaluate it and look at the local component that Debbie can provide that the others cannot. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything?
As you know, when we do a request for qualifications, and there are certain instances that by statute we are required to use that process, the ranking criteria is based strictly on qualifications. There are a number of components of that. The ranking team takes the submissions, reviews them, oftentimes interviews those proposers to make a determination of the most qualified in each of the different categories. Again, that's driven by statute and by how those things work. There was a local preference that was allowed. In this case, that did not change the rankings. I think the ranking committee was Mr. Williams, Mr. Tusa, Ms. Hyde. You know, they work with our lobbyists very closely, and we believe they properly scored them based on their experience and the criteria that was set before them, so we're comfortable with the recommendation.
Okay. Any more discussion from the audience?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say...
I made the second. No, I did. I made the motion to...
I made the second.
And she made the second, that's correct.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number 43 is a request to write in of the council-selected restoration component of Restore or Pot Two projects. Over the years since Restore has been a part of our lives, which seems like many years these days. Pot Two is a pot that doesn't get spoken about very often. There's some unique characteristics to it that have typically precluded us from participating. However, we believe there may be times now where the opportunity is there for us to make some submissions, or at least get in the conversation about what they're looking for, what they're allowing. Most of the projects that have been considered have been by states or state agencies. We believe there's gonna be a move away from that in the near future. The five goals of the council regarding Pot Two are to restore and conserve habitat, restore water quality and quantity, replenish and protect living coastal and marine resources, enhance community resilience, and restore and revitalize the Gulf economy. So there's a number of things there that may have some impact on what we're trying to do, so today we're asking just for direction and permission from the board to begin moving through this process without getting tangled up in the others that are going on, but dive a little deeper into what they're doing and what may be available for us to draw from as we move forward.
Clarification, Mr. Jones?
Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead.
You're believing, I think so.
Huh?
You're believing, so I don't know.
That's all right.
Anyway, on page two of the submission, there's four items that were listed there as recommendations for staff, for priorities. They're not supposedly in any particular order as they're listed.
That's correct.
So I'm gonna suggest, as we look at this, these four items, that the Choctawatch Bay estuary program be number one, water quality improvements on the bay and watershed, septic-to-sewer conversion, stormwater retro, sediment abatement. Third would be the recreational preservation of purpose land acquisition improvements, including the Choctawatch paddle trail, and the fourth one would be the Marine, Walton County Marine Enhancement Center. So if we're looking at us to make a determination of what is the priority, that's my submitted side. It's up to the board.
Is that a motion?
It can be. I'm so moved.
That would make an motion?
Yes, it would.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Could Melinda...
Melinda, you want to come up and speak to this?
If you want more than you already got, you better get her. Here I am.
Could you explain the estuary program? That's the multi-county?
Correct.
So that's the difference between that and the water quality projects?
So the concept behind having two separate line items for that is that the program itself is something that's going to be regional in nature, so it'll cover Okaloosa, Walton, Washington, and Holmes. It also incorporates some of Alabama as well, and then it's a program that can kind of run some of these projects. The water quality line item is more for projects. So those projects may be run by the program ultimately, or they can be run by Walton County.
They're sort of hand-in-hand.
They are, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Any other discussion?
Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is request your approval to advertise and request for qualifications for continuing professional engineering consulting services. This will be for the four companies we now have on a rotating, continuing basis. This is a request for qualification where, just as we talked about earlier, where the qualifications of those submitting become the determining factor. Obviously, there is a negotiating process, but initially... Obviously, there is a negotiating process, but initially, the, the top-scored companies are based on those qualifications. So, the only question we have, we currently have four rotating firms. There was some question that we may need five. I would suggest we advertise, look at the responses, and the separation between the top firms and the fourth or fifth firm to determine whether you want four or five to play in the continuing, to play, that's not a very word, but to work with us on a continuing services basis. This is the beginning of the process, so, you know, this will just get us moving forward with the RFQs and get it on the street.
And we'll decide at a later date whether we need four or five, or?
That's correct.
Okay.
Motion to approve the advertisement for RFQ for continuing professional engineering consulting services.
We have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
One thing we probably got as many to clear up on this matter is, I believe, the last, at least the last time, maybe the last two opportunities we had, staff did the review process. There was a time when the board chose to do that. You know, unless you're very comfortable with reviewing the qualifications and to defend your decisions about the qualifications, we would probably recommend that staff act in that role and bring you a list of those which are most qualified. But certainly, if the board elected to do it, that would be your prerogative.
Our engineers or staff?
I'm sorry?
Our engineers or the staff that looks it over?
Yes.
Yeah, I would recommend that we, we have our engineers on the panel.
Okay.
And they're more qualified to pick other engineers than we are and bring us a, and we don't have to make that motion. Do we need to make that motion right now?
Well, if you were gonna elect to be the selection committee, you would have to make that motion.
Okay. I don't see anybody raising their hand to make that motion, so we'll just continue to let the staff do it. Okay?
Okay. So, by unanimous consent, staff will be doing the review?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Do we, yeah, we need to take a vote on the advertisement, so do we have a motion for the advertisement?
We have a motion.
Okay. All right. Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Next item is request your approval to seek bids for pavement marking services to re-mark the center lines, edge, and all crosswalks and stop bars with thermoplastic pavement marking on approximately 2.92 miles of scenic Gulf Drive. We believe that's the, gonna be the most feasible and best outcome for that stretch of road, is to contract it out.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay.
Thank you, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, the next item is a request to approve and authorize the chair's signature on an agreement with the Walton County Fair Association for the use of facilities at the Walton County Fairgrounds. This is a request from Public Works to use the parking area for CDL training. You'll have an agreement there that's very simply stated, that we have, the fair association's granting us right of use. If we tear anything up, we fix it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to acknowledge my conflict, and I will abstain from the vote.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Let the record show that it was a four-o vote, and Mr. Glott will abstain for conflict. Okay.
Good afternoon, again Chairman. Brian Kellenberger standing in for Jay Tusa. He's out today celebrating his son's graduation from collegiate high school.
Yeah, I remember those days. That was a great day.
He's taken on a new commitment of college, so everybody give Jay a pat on the back when he gets back. First item is a discussion of property parcel number thirty-dash-two-S-dash-two-one-dash-four-two-two-nine-zero dash zero-zero-zero-dash-zero-one-three-zero. It's in the twelve-thousand block of Highway ninety-eight, and Mr. Mike Mead is here to talk about that.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for your time. My name is, excuse me, I'm sorry. My name is John Mead. I'm here with my father and friend, Mike Mead, John Mead, twenty-four Walter Martin Road, Fort Walton Beach, Florida, resident of Okaloosa County, taxpayer of Walton County. Same with Michael Mead, address twenty-four Walter Martin Road. If I could give you a brief rundown of why we're here, this relates to some property that's located on Highway ninety-eight and Professional Place. It's, they're kind of across the street from Smith's Antiques, kind of the easiest way to explain it. The, the welcome center that's being proposed by the EDC has, or the TDC, excuse me, has, has brought to our attention that, that the county is looking to acquire real estate in order to welcome folks into the community coming from the west. Accordingly, this stirred up the conversation, that this piece of property is not only located in the same vicinity, but it's also directly, you can lead to the beach, to the public beaches directly from this piece of property. So, that led to not only the placement of a welcome center, but also a place for folks to park to use the beaches, which is, I'm sure, right within your strategic plan, which I heard moments ago, and within the, always within the public's domain. So, what we are here proposing to the commission today is for you to take it into consideration for the welcome center, but if, if you prefer for the welcome center to be where it is, that the accessory use would be for the public parking. And our, our suggestion and proposal to the county is that if, if there's, if leads directly without having to go through any red lights, cross Highway ninety-eight or anything of that nature, and it leads directly to the county's new parking facility there on Driftwood. So, of course, with all the safety measures and all the money and time the county has expended, this would be a direct benefit and activity with that parking location. As far as, how do we impact our budget? The proposal, one of the proposals that I would suggest we, we have is to offer this to the county, which is why we're here today. In keeping with that offer, we suggest a number of ideas. We let the county select an appraiser or two. We have this appraiser give us an opinion of value of acquiring the property, or in the alternative to do a land lease. It can be on a month-to-month basis. The county can lease it for as long or as little as the county would like. And so, what this would give the county, the ability to do, is have a minimum impact on the budget, which is what goes into mind with every decision we make. The parking doesn't have to be an elevated parking garage. It can be as simple as road base. We don't have to have the fanciest parking, but what we need to do is help to get our folks to the beach, and that's exactly what this would do. It's a couple of blocks from the beach. How do we answer that? There are two businesses adjacent to this property that are looking at providing this shuttle service free of charge. They do this in South Florida on a daily basis. The income comes from advertising on the golf carts and gratuities to the drivers who do it on a voluntary basis. So, this is not a new concept, it's not a new idea. In fact, it's, it's very straightforward. If the county's looking at other ideas, three years, two years down the road, that's okay. This is immediately available, and the county could move to other sites if it deems appropriate. So, this seems to be, in my, in my eyes, a win-win for the county in that you don't have to go aggressively impact your budget. You don't have to have any debt service. You don't have to have any debt. You simply have the option to lease this at whatever an independent appraiser says is a fair market value and not a dime more. We don't have, we don't have to talk Triumph Funds. We don't have to do any of those items. It's just, it can be as straightforward as a, as a land lease. It can be with an option to purchase, or the county could acquire it. But I think that this is a real chance. It's four-point-eight acres, and I think it's a real good chance for the county to have some absolute immediate gratification. And we're here to answer any questions. Once again, Michael Mead and Jerry Andrews, property owners.
Any question?
Is that Professional Court run? Is there an actual road there?
It's kinda hard to see, I don't know from where you're sitting, but there's, there's three different ways. You can run it directly up to Ellis Road, Professional Place, that runs back to Ellis Road, and you can also, also run farther to the east. So, there's three roads that you don't have to get out on the Highway ninety-eights to make it there. It's the same pedestrian, walking, and like I mentioned before, this opportunity will spur if the county doesn't want anything other than parking with some, as I refer to them, with Gulf Power lights, we leased from Gulf Power to light the, for safety. It, it doesn't take any more infrastructure. It doesn't take any more employees to, to run systems. It, it, it will generate itself. And once again, if it doesn't work, we just stop doing it. We're not locked into a ten-year land lease, and it's just vacant real estate.
And what's really unique about it, I'm Michael Mead, one of the landowners, is the fact that it's approximately five acres, almost immediately adjacent to the Gulf front that you already own. What is it, Pompano Joe's? Is that what's down there? I forgot the name of the, it's not a state park, it's a county park, as I understand it. Gulf front that you already own, that nobody can really tell you what to do with it 'cause you own it. What we're suggesting is an immediate piece parcel property that you can lease. You can buy it, or we own or finance it. And if you only want a lease that you can buy out of within, in short terms, if you find out it doesn't work for you, throw in a, a one-year termination payment or something simple. We'd really rather see you lease it so our grandkids can own it on down the road. But if you wanna buy it, you can buy it. But it's a, we think it's an opportunity for the county to solve a couple of its problems. It provides you with immediate access to the Gulf of Mexico, and it provides you a west, west county line place to put a temporary welcome center should you want to. If you lease the land, you put it, your, your welcome station on a mobile vehicle of some kind. If it doesn't work, you fold up your tent and leave. But you've got two or three roads that go immediately down to land you own, and seems to be important in light of all the things you have going on with Gulf front access.
Mr. Mead, up at the other portion of the property, there's a road called Professional Court. Does it, does it intersect with Ellis Road?
It, yes, there's a, it connects with Ellis Road with an easement, a recorded easement, yes.
'Cause otherwise, if you have to go out to the east of that property, you gotta go down and make several jogs over to South Florida.
Right. But if you go down Ellis Road, it's a straight shot, and we've got the recorded easement. I've got the document with me, should you choose to see it tonight or legal counsel would like.
Do you know if there's any wetlands on there?
We've been told, we had a develop, to answer your question, there are no wetlands. We had a development order from the county back in two thousand and eight to build a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial condominiums. And we've got plans approved for, I think, a four-story parking garage?
Yes.
That, that's on the other side of this thing. So, should you choose to buy it and put a parking garage there, you, the county, in its former life, previously approved that, that parking garage. Some of you may remember some of the financial problems the country was having in oh-eight, subprime meltdown, and we got nervous and chose not to, to build. Yeah. And.
Good move.
And it seemed to be a good move not to do it. But, go ahead, John.
To answer your question, there's one turn. You turn left on Ellis, and it takes you straight to the beach.
Oh, God, dude. 'Cause looking at the map here that I got?
Yes.
Photograph, it looks like Professional Court pulls up short before it gets to Ellis. So, that's on this here.
Yeah. It's, it, there's, it, it connects directly to it.
Okay.
Yes.
It had an easement already?
Yes, sir.
And that development order is still alive or active for that parking garage? Is the development order still alive?
I would think not. Part of the development order, matter of fact, we actually, in the, I've got it here well, as well, we deeded to the county for Professional Place. That's the name of the street. County didn't have a right-of-way over on the, the east side of this property that we're talking about here tonight. And we, the county prepared a right-of-way deed, which we gave to the county to give the county the access, the legal right to go on Professional Place. So, and that was part of the development order, which has expired through non-use.
Could you explain the, the answer to the question?
Oh, yeah. This property also has an access road. If you, it's part of the government lot layout that has the thirty-foot ingress-and-egress checkerboard type system, if you're familiar with what I'm talking about in the government lots, where they made sure no land was, landlocked. Coming across us in front of the adjunct, the property to the west of us is, what's the name of your other project here?
Fountain Plaza.
Fountain Plaza. But there's a, a service road that can be installed from the red light, which is just to the east. What's that street over there?
Holiday Road.
Holiday Road, if you're familiar with Holiday Road. So, there's actually a service road that can be installed from Holiday Road over here, so you actually have a, a traffic light to get to all this. And as, as you know, ninety-eight there is being resurfaced, and bicycle lanes are being put in, and it's, just seems to make sense, and.
We got a lot going in at Driftwood already.
Well, maybe.
Or maybe.
We're not, we're not a hundred percent sure of that. So, what you're asking today is for a direction to the TDC to get into conversations with y'all about if they're interested, how they wanna finance it, if they wanna lease it, if they wanna buy it, or if they want it at all.
Absolutely.
And along with that, if, if it has, has the board's interest in looking forward. And so, I think that's, they're looking to.
Right.
They're saying, what's the direction from the board?
Right. Well, I, I know the TDC is looking for satellite offices on the east and west end of ninety-eight, and this is, this is on the south side of ninety-eight, so that would, I mean, we don't wanna welcome center on the north side of the road that nobody's gonna visit.
And it's always, don't throw away from Gulf front property that you own, which really is a combination, in my humble opinion, makes it unique, this parcel property. As we all know, real estate is kinda unique, but this is really unique because of its juxtaposition to your park.
Would you be interested in like a lease with an option to buy?
Absolutely. And that's what we're hoping, that a motion will come from the, from the board that at least directs the TDC to explore options which are acceptable to you. I think you will find that we're pretty compatible and pretty willing to work, 'cause we come not in an adversary, just the opposite. We didn't want someone, some of our dear friends to later on say, hey, Mike, I wish we had known. And so, if you make an informed decision not to do it, at least you've done it with the information, as opposed to looking back and say, well, Mike, why didn't you say something sooner? Well, here I am. And so, we just felt like we all owed it to each other to let us know that it was available, should you choose. We can't make you. We know we can't make you. But if it's good for both of us, and the appraiser comes up to the price of, well, okay, I can live with that, and you say, I can live with that, either from a rental standpoint, or a purchase, or at least with a purchase, then it's at least what we're talking about.
This is really, we're just.
Yeah, we're giving the TDC permission to get in negotiation.
Excuse the voice.
Get in conversation with them, and we need a motion for that. with them, and we need a motion for that.
I move we authorize TDC to negotiate and bring us back a proposal.
We have a second?
Second for discussion, if that's what they choose as the TDC. I mean, it's really not, it's the TDC to bring it back to us.
It does fit a lot of our needs in that area.
I agree, but I'd like the direction from the TDC to tell us what the appraisals...
So we have a motion to have the CDC get in conversations with y'all, bring us back the answers from that negotiation, and we have a second. Is there any more discussion?
Or to bring back options?
Options, yeah.
From the TDC.
Do we want to go to the step further and authorize them to get a proposal?
That's what...
I think that would have a bearing on whatever negotiations, whether it's a purchase or...
I'll amend the motion to that.
If they...
I'll second that amendment there.
Well, if they agree that they want to move forward with it, to go ahead and bring back a...
I think a lease with an option to buy would be...
Yeah, there's a lot of ways to do this.
I would like the TDC to tell us what they want, is what I'm getting at, is that...
Okay. All right, everybody knows what we're doing, right?
Right.
Okay.
So are we getting appraisals in on it?
Yeah, I think we've amended the motion to that.
End of the motion to get a...
The TDC has the authority to get a...
Has the authority to get a... Okay, any more discussion?
Could ask one point of clarification. Is this motion for, this is for parking, parking and welcome or welcome whatever they deem appropriate?
Whatever they deem appropriate.
Okay, thank you, excuse me.
Okay. Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say noye. Mike, my friend, it's good to see you again and you've trained your son well.
I brought the best along and I stayed behind.
Well, I wasn't going to say that.
I had the pleasure of graduating from Walton in '67, just a few years ago, so I'm back.
Mike and I have been friends for a number of years. We went to college together. Our intermural football team in college was the college champions. And he did play some whole games in that. Normally, he gets thrown out before the first half. Mike, it's good to see you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, next item of business is request approval to advertise an invitation to bid for repairs to Thomas Pilcher Park that was to repair the damage sustained during Hurricane Michael. We've completed the design permitting and FEMA permitting and we're ready to move forward with bidding that project out and getting it reconstructed.
Motion two, approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say noye.
We do not have any updates today and thank you for consideration for all of our items.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay. Public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, the, and we should have brought this up at the beginning of the meeting, but I only had to confirm it. We do not need to have this public hearing. It was regarding money that we were intending to move from general reserves for the mobility plan and the associated impact fee study. However, we determined we could pay for that out of property share funds and we have more than sufficient funds in property share account to pay for it. So therefore, this public hearing is not needed tonight.
Now, Sid, do we have to open a public hearing in the council? Okay.
Just don't have one.
Okay, all right.
We'd like to thank Melissa for finding for us.
Thanks, Melissa.
Welcome back, Melissa.
Okay. Item number 51 is a request to continue the public hearing that you guys previously set for today's date. We'd like to continue that to June 10th, 2019, and this is for an ordinance imposing a fifth cent tourist development tax. Whenever we set the public hearing for today's date, I think I told you guys that we would, we were waiting to hear from the Department of Revenue about their review of the ordinance and they requested a little bit additional time. So by June the 10th, hopefully we'll have everything in line to go ahead and have the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say noye.
Okay, and then item number 52 is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the retainer agreement with the law offices of Napoleon Scholnick, Riley and Jackson and the Atkinson Law Firm to represent Walton County in opioid litigation.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say noye.
Thank you, Commissioner, that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, do you have anything? Commissioner Depper. No, I'm sorry, let me do Commissioner Clyde's first. I'm sorry, Dan.
Oh, you got them. As those of y'all who were in the meeting in Tallahassee, the, you know, it was recommended to, by the Secretary of DEP that we began the process of removing septic systems that are next door or adjacent to existing sewer lines. So because we've been, we've started down the path of improving water quality in our waterways, particularly the Choctawatch Bay, we need to ensure that our citizens continue to have abundant supplies of drinking water and recreational opportunities. So what I'm asking is that we authorize the chairman to sign a letter to our franchisees, which would be mainly the city of Freeport, Regional Utilities, South Walton Utilities, and ask them to give us a number of how many septic systems are currently operating that are adjacent to existing sewer lines. And of that number, how many they have actually sent letters to asking them to hook up. That will give us up-to-date numbers so that we can then pursue our grant funding and we can take the necessary steps to implement that program. But the first, the first step is to actually have good numbers. And the part of the letter would be to give them 120 days, which is, should be ample time for them to get back to the county administrator with those numbers. So the motion is to send the draft letter. If Sid has any cleanup, that's fine, but to send that letter to those three entities and ask them to provide that information to us within 120 days.
Yes, sir.
This grant that you want to try and get, what is it paying for, if you get it?
Paying, I believe it would pay for the connection fee between the homeowner and the utility.
I hope we can get something like that because presently, no matter which one of these franchise areas that we, there is, people cannot afford the six to nine thousand-plus dollars to hook onto it. So unless there's something, even though I know by statute, it can require somebody, thing is there in front of their house, they got a year to get it hooked to it, but I'm not going to be the one to tell a single family member that's on fixed income, they got to come up with $6,000. Regional is the only one, I'm not sure they still do it, where they actually finance that. I know Freeport started it with Brandon Oates, but they quit doing that. So unless you've got a six or $9,000 laying around to hook in, I'm not going to be the one to require until the septic system can't be fixed and you can't get a permit to do it.
You hear all these numbers, there's hundreds of these things floating around and we don't have good numbers. So we, the first step towards asking for money from the state or the feds is to get good numbers up to date. And I'm not talking about a sewer, sewer line is a mile away, I'm talking about immediately adjacent. So there's no cost to the, to the utility. It's just a matter of finding numbers.
Your, is this, is this a motion, first of all?
Yes.
Second of all, is, are you including all the utilities? And I suggest that you do.
I would, I would actually include countywide. Although our emphasis is the bay. If we, if we had numbers from the Funi Act, that'd be okay.
Well, and, and the beach also.
Paxton and the beach.
Yeah, okay. All right, do we have a second on that motion?
Let me go this out. I'll second it for discussion. If you look into the Funi Act, as far as what they have in their franchise area, believe it or not, it goes all the way from the east city limits line all the way to Choctawatch River, south of the interstate. Never understood how they managed to get such a big franchise here that they're never ever going to be able to service. So even though it's in their franchise area and you're asking for this information, I seriously doubt we're going to get anything from them.
I think you'll find that the answer to the question is zero because they have no septic systems.
Well, I know they, all they got is septic out there and...
But there's not lines anywhere. Most of those areas have no lines and they have no prospect to get there.
Let me just clarify something. I think what Commissioner Clyde was asking is just for information at this point.
Yeah, we're not talking about anything but numbers.
And at this point, this is the first starting step for figuring the septic tanks on the bay out. We can't do anything without this information. So I think, in my opinion, we need to, we need to go ahead and make this step and, you know, we'll have to see what kind of response we get, but I think it's our obligation to make this step and then we go from there. So that, that's my understanding and if, if you don't have a second, I will step down from the chair.
I gave a second.
With discussion. So anyway, is there any discussion from the audience?
Well, can you, can you say a motion one more time, please?
That we send a letter to our franchisees because that's who has the sewer lines. We, and we request within 120 days that they tell us how many septic systems they have that are adjacent to existing sewer lines. So immediately adjacent to existing sewer lines.
Looking for numbers, I just wanted to clarify.
Looking for numbers.
Chatting concerns also.
And then that would give us those numbers to use to try to find some grant money to help these people.
Anybody else? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say noye. Thank you, Commissioner Clyde. Commissioner Depper?
As you know, I've been working with Habitat Humanity. There's in the Mossy Head area up by Boy Scout Tulip and where all the roads are named for flowers. There's Hope Village, we are on our third home that's been permitted, and there is one lot that is not usable for a home. And Mr. Carpenter, matter of fact, had mentioned it to me, that it might be a good idea for this to be a park, neighborhood pocket park for that area, considering what we're trying to do is Habitat for Humanity homes typically have younger children that we offer those, work with those families. Cliff, the county, Tom Baker, everyone has come together, I've got to give them the credit for this, to create a pocket park. And Cliff, if you'd speak about it because you're the one who offered your time and services. Tom, also, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Met with Commissioner Depper and she showed me the property, that Habitat for Humanity was interested in donating to the county. Offered to do the survey design and permitting at no cost to the county. The planning department has also put together a conceptual plan over the last month or so and we've already completed the survey. We did a topographic survey and a boundary survey, both. And there's definitely some good opportunities on the piece of property. I think that it does slope off in the back some, but the front half of the lot is definitely very, very usable. It's approximately, I think it's about 70 by 160, I think, is about the dimensions of it. And so certainly, certainly probably somewhere between half and two-thirds of the lot will be very usable for a neighborhood-type park. October 1st is the 2020, 2021 FERDAP application cycle. And so FERDAP has money again and so it might be an opportunity to apply for a free $50,000 from FERDAP to try to get it started if you wanted to try to do that. And we would certainly help coordinate with the planning department and staff and whoever you'd like to try to make something happen there. But it is, it is a beautiful piece of property. I did walk it and there's some very nice trees on it as well.
The property's already been donated. We have the deed and I've been waiting for a couple of months and we finally have the deed. Cliff has offered his time. Tom Baker actually has two companies that are willing to donate equipment. Kelly Freymeyer has been helping too with the county. So this is as minimal and I will work with staff for that FERDAP grant.
Yep, there's...
For this pocket park.
Do, Sid, do we need a motion on this or just...
So is the...
Buy staff to continue working to...
Request projection. Well, yeah, to accept the deed, we have, do we have the deed? Is it in the agenda package as you respond?
The deed is.
It is, okay. So, yeah, we do need a motion to accept the property for this, according to the deed. I know Heather drafted the deed awhile. Right, from Habitat Humanity. Do we have an accepted deed from... We do, okay.
What's the motion?
Make a motion to accept this property for the use of the pocket park.
Second.
Any more discussion?
And authorize Commissioner Anderson to sign the acceptance of the deed.
And authorize you to sign the...
Yeah, I don't have everything signed. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion here in the board?
How much, how much do you think this park's going to cost?
Well, it's pretty, it's pretty limited really what you can fit on this park. I'm thinking it's going to be a, kind of a lighter use type facility.
No bathrooms, nothing that, just...
Yeah.
Sweatsets ADA compatible.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a great place to have restrooms to maintain and all that kind of stuff, but certainly a playground for the younger kids in the neighborhood certainly would be a good, good thing to put in there. You could definitely put a walking trail in very easily and, you know, maybe some other types of recreational type facilities that, you know, FERDAP would pay for as part of it. They have a playground program that's specifically just for children 12 and under and so it's a separate program from the regular FERDAP. Or if you want facilities for older kids, you would go through the normal FERDAP program. But they have plenty of money right now and you can apply for $50,000, there's no match whatsoever. But applications are due from October 1st to October 29th.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the deed and have the chairman sign the deed. That's correct, okay. Is there anything else? Anybody from the audience? Tom, do you want to speak or not?
I'm Tom Baker. I just wanted to be here in case you had any questions about, I don't have to.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Seeing no more comments from the audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say noye.
I mean, Commissioner, I'm not setting, but you may want to go ahead and authorize staff to seek grant funding, to reconstructing the improvement.
Did you make another motion for that?
Make a motion to authorize staff to seek grants for the FERDAP grant.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say noye. Commissioner Depper?
What's said and good, Mr. Chairman? I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have a couple of things. I'd like to request direction for staff to bring back recommendations for the intersection of 393 and 38, traffic improvements. If you don't know, it's starting to back up there pretty good and I don't want us to get so far behind it, takes, takes a lot of effort to catch up. So I'd rather us start looking towards the future on that intersection and I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to... Okay, I don't have to make a motion. All right, well, that's what I'd like to do with board approval. I'll make this. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The other thing is, another piece of property came up... The other thing is, another piece of property came up at Helen McCall. The Catholic Church is also in, interested in the back half of that property, and all I'm requesting now is to direct staff to contact the seller of the property and check on the price and all that. We won't do anything other than that at present time.
Any motion for that?
Yep.
I'll make your motion.
Okay. Now, second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Citizens request. Lee Moore.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to talk tonight. And this is really, other than a request for general support, information, informational. I'm the president of Scenic Walton. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit here, and formerly we were Scenic Corridor Foundation, which you're probably more familiar with. So we are expanding our geographic reach to all of Walton County, and we also, in the last couple of years, have become an affiliate organization of both Citizens for Scenic Florida and Scenic America. There are nonprofits that do a lot of the same type of work that we do on a statewide and national level respectively. And so we're, we're very excited about this. Our new logo matches Scenic America branding, that's required of affiliates, and we're happy to do it. And our, our board is super excited about this. We're expanding our board actively right now to incorporate members from North Walton. We've got three folks that have agreed to do that and committed to come on to the board. We still have to officially elect them to the board. We're, you know, we're doing things, in a process here, but, but I'm excited to announce that Bruce Naylor is joining the board, or he's under consideration, really strong likely consideration, a realtor up in, in the north part of the county. Also Tony Valley, an architect that now lives in Freeport and moved his office to Dufuniac and is very active in the Main Street Dufuniac effort, and so is Bruce. And then Steve Hall has also agreed to come on to the board. And we're continuing to explore other folks. If you have some suggestions for people north of the bay that you think would be interested, please let me know. Just for information, we are focused on really beautification and safety improvements for the roadways in Walton County. That includes landscaping medians, undergrounding utilities, and, and also improving or having safer and more well-connected pedestrian and cyclist facilities. So we work to bring together the community, businesses, other nonprofits, local governmental entities, and FDOT, and anybody else that wants to help and participate in projects and programs to further that. We also do advocate for good guidelines for development design. We want it all to be beautiful, both the public spaces and private development, and so we advocate for that as well. We're getting a lot of positive response from folks that we're talking to in the north of the county. I'd say central and north, everything north of the bay is what we're doing. It's pretty aggressive, there's a lot to it. So you all have supported our organization in its former form in the past, we appreciate that very much. The request tonight is general support for us going forward. It's, it's a lot to do. We also want to have discussions with you and others in the community about how our organization can help going forward. We're serious about it. There's a lot to do, it's going to take a long time, but we're in it for the long haul. And so we want to know, you know, what resources we can bring to the table. We're, we're asking for a lot all the time, you all know that. I've got some nicknames from it, I believe, I've heard. But we also want to give back, even more so than we do already with just our efforts to coordinate and bring people together. So I'm, I'm happy to entertain some discussion about that with you, and I have some ideas that I want to run by you guys in the, in the coming months. Last thing I want to say is that we are incredibly excited. Scenic America chooses an affiliate to co-host a conference with, a Scenic Principals Conference every year. And we submitted a proposal and we were selected for this year. So October 24th through the 26th, we will be co-hosting that conference. They'll bring in people from all over the country that believe in these, in these principles that I've just outlined. And so it's great exposure for Walton County. We'll have some educational activities on one day of that conference that'll be like a Scenic Principal Symposium that they're going to assist us with putting together. Of course, anyone and everyone is invited, especially folks here at the county, staff and elected officials. We, we're very excited about that. So more to come, more details to come and information about that in the near future. We're going to put on a big press push to get the word out about Scenic Walton, and we're just excited to, to explore what we can do going forward and working with everyone to make our county even better than it already is. Thanks. Woo, that was right on time, wasn't it? Thank you.
Practice.
Promise?
You must have practiced.
I actually didn't, but thank you. I've kind of done it a few times, so, here in front of you, so I've gotten used to that time. Any questions or comments?
No.
Well, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we're not going to admit to having a nickname.
Good afternoon. Melissa Ward Dunlap and Chipman. We'll set this up real quick, sorry. Good evening. We're coming before you today to talk about a public park that we'd like to propose. The purpose of this request is to ask this board to set us for a workshop on June the 10th, and maybe an hour before the meeting, and then allow us to come on the regular agenda to be, to get a vote from this board and some direction to staff to work with us. This property is, all told, a little over nine acres, almost 10, and it is a part of a platted subdivision from 1910. And it isn't really the highest and best use to have a platted subdivision out there. It's a very beautiful piece of property that is environmentally sensitive. And what we would like to do is utilize the property as a public park, and to do that we have to have a land use amendment and a development order, and we would have to replat it and to change it from a platted subdivision to a dedicated park and dedicate it to the county and work with the county in getting a number of grants to get it fully constructed. The park proposal, as you all may recall, we came before you before to, to ask for some new language in the zoning for parks and recreation to include ancillary uses, which would be some boat storage that's pole barn style boat storage, yet kayaks, Yolo, things like that. And this, and other parts of the park include places for the sheriff's office to have a place for their boats for emergency purposes, for the Chalk Hatch Basin Alliance to be able to use their testing facilities, storage for that so they can check out the water and, and work with us to do, put in a better stormwater system and a, and a shoreline program for that park. Tonight, we're not discussing all the details of that. What we're asking for is to be scheduled for a workshop and then to be scheduled June, June 10th to get the direction of this board to staff. Because where we are right now, we submitted a land use application amendment, and we are, we've passed the technical review portion, but we cannot go forward to Planning Commission for a vote on the land use amendment if, if this board does not wish to have a park. So that's what it's about. It's about asking whether or not you want to have a park in that location, and if you want to help direct your staff to work with us in pursuing that. Of course, you would still have to meet all the other requirements of Land Development Code and Comp Plan in order to achieve it. You would not be approving the land use amendment on June 10th or the park or anything else, just giving staff direction if you want to pursue a park in the future.
With?
Yes, sir.
Have you all reached out to the surrounding community and proffered what you're talking about here, see what kind of reaction you get?
Yes, sir. And this process for us predates some of you on the board. In fact, I dare say many of you on the board. We started with coming before the board and asking for direction. We had a charrette, and there was not a horrible outcome of that. What I mean by that is there was some people from the community, it wasn't like hundreds of people, but there were maybe 15 or 20 people that showed up. We have had people contact us. The process for changing the Land Development Code and Comp Plan was long and arduous and therefore we were in a low period, like we, we were not very active in the community until we came back and found out we could even change the land use category. So, but we did have a charrette, and this workshop is a part of that future development plan, working out, getting the community involved. And then before we do our development, or as we move through our development, we intend to have some other community meetings to get people's input. But yes, sir, we did.
So, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, so I, I just happen to, I Google everything.
Sure.
So we've got its historical Santa Rosa Lanning Small Scale Amendment. Mr. Carpenter states this request is accidentally placed on the board, it's currently on hold pending changes of the Comp Plan and LDC. So that's what we're talking about. Has it been changed or where are we at with that or, so we need to add ancillary, is what you're saying, to parks and recreation?
No, no, I'm sorry. So in December of 2018, this board adopted a new future land use amendment.
Right.
Shortly thereafter, South Walton Community Council opposed that through the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Right.
You guys have worked out a settlement and it, and most recently last month, I will.
Let's, let's keep this discussions strictly for the workshop and putting it on the agenda. This, this is, you know, this, all this is going to be discussed at a later date. This is just to give the public a, a job, a chance to have a meeting at a workshop, and then we can put it on the agenda to see if they can move forward or not. So let's, let's keep that till that.
Well, with that said, Mr. Chairman, motion to schedule a public hearing on June 10th, 2019, at, is that our board meeting day?
Yes.
Three o'clock on that day at South Walton.
Okay.
Second.
Second, and do you want to add?
Or a special, do you have a workshop or a special meeting?
Will they be able to take action during that, at that time?
Special meeting. Motion to a special meeting.
So workshop. We'll allow you to, that way we don't have to do what we did today.
I do want to make, make it clear that we're not going to be taking in any official action on the land use change.
Right.
You know, and we're not going to be really taking any official action on whether or not we'll formally accept a park or anything like that. It's just a discussion about the plans, and then if we need any board direction on directing staff or anything like that, we can get it, but we're not taking in any official action about what's ultimately going to happen at that park because that's going to have to go through the normal.
Correct.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Do we need to take discussion from the audience? Okay, any discussion from the audience? Come ahead, sir. Come, come up here, please, and state your name and spell your last name.
My name is Lou DeMann, D-E-M-A-N. Would that workshop or meeting be open to the public?
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely.
Do you advertise at all?
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Now's the time for other public comments. You can talk about anything you want to. You have three minutes or less. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none? Let's go to Mr. Carpenter.
Looks like, while Matt comes up, it looks like we only have one quasi judicial item. So anyone who anticipates testifying on this remaining item, if you would, go ahead and stand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial provides this board will be the truth? Thank you. I think it's just Mr. Bronte and Mr. Carpenter, so they'll know to state their name for the record. Did any of the commissioners have any ex parte communication on this item?
No.
All right, I'm seeing no ex parte communication. Ready to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R. We have one item that would have been heard last month except.
I'm kind of pulling the words hard out there.
We amended our schedule and that's why it's on this particular agenda. This is the final step in the development review process for the Beechwood Estates development. This is a plat application submitted by Dubay on behalf of 68 Ventures LLC requesting approval to plat 22 single-family lots on approximately 3.37 acres. Project's about 16 one hundredths of a mile south of the intersection of US 98 and Sugar Drive, located on the north side of Rachel Road at the west end of Rachel Road and identified by the parcel number in your package. As far as history, this development went to TOC and was unanimously approved on May 3rd, 2017. The Planning Commission unanimously approved this development on July 13, 2017, and this Board of County Commissioners approved the project by a board, a four to zero, excuse me, on August 15, 2017. And the plat application has been tentatively approved by the Technical Review Committee on April 3rd, 2019. The project is substantially complete, and we are ready for the plat to be considered.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Chairman, if we could, enter the staff report into the record.
Right. Real quick, before everybody gets out of here, we've got banana pudding and some food in the room over there. We're celebrating Mr. Chapman's birthday.
He's fast catching me.
He's 49.
Forty-nine, exactly right.